Thank you very much. For this moment, I think we should observe one minute of Moment of Salia for those who have lost their lives. And they are so rest in peace. May God bring peace and joy to the people of Benue and the community in Leewa Town. Thank you very much, please be seated. Thank you, the Chairman of the Governor's Room and his progressive partner. All the other governors here present. I want to really sincerely thank all of you for the sense of solidarity, commitment, and great values that you have given today. To the man I've said, I call the Chief Monarch, they talk to you. I heard you clearly and I've listened to your requests and your remarks. Thank you. To the men and women of the armed forces, the security forces, the police. Thank you for the good job that we have been doing and what you are still doing to keep our citizens safe and our country more respected. I know you've sacrificed so many lives. Watch some of your comments. So many nights and stay in the bush. Sacrifice your time. I salute all of you. I say thank you very much. The Deputy Governor of Benue State, the Secretary to the Government of the Federation and former Governor of Benue State, my friend George Akomen. All members of National Assembly present here, members of the House of Assembly, especially the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Defence and Intelligence and Chairman of our party, even though it's not for a political improvement but as an elder statesman and a peace-loving man, I'm glad you are here. This is your government too. All honorable ministers and the National Security Advisor, members of the Benue State Legislative and Judiciary Abs of Government, all other senior government officials, party faithfuls and stakeholders in Benue State. Please accept our condolences, ladies and gentlemen of the press. We're here not just to show our face or to share in your griefs and condone you and access for the loss of lives that are occurred. I abboted my visit to Leewa Town because of the rain, flood and floodwater. I'm particularly seeing the ruins and the wreckage of camera beside enough to keep a decision. We'll do something for the redevelopment and recreation of that environment. I want to salute especially General Atompera. I have nothing for you for a long time. Thank you. We arrived here today saying gloomy faces. This is not the kind of visit I wanted. I wanted to be here for commission projects for the state, for progress and development, for reassurance of hope and prosperity. And I have spoken with the Governor privately. Upon it. We are here to help you with peace. It's fight after development. And you are elected under the progressive banner to ensure there's a peace, stability and progress so that we can come and commission projects rejoice with you of progress, value and things of joy. And you are not elected to bury people, create offhand and offages sympathize with widows. We walk with you to achieve that peace. It is you who will walk with us as well. Who will show us the way our politics must look at. And you are here to point, to walk with everybody, walk with the peace. Not everybody will like you in politics. They hate me like her too. Well, I'm here. I have the President. Another democratic regime. I made a promise. I will protect my abusers and accusers with the principle of democracy, freedom and prosperity. I will protect them. Abuse me how you want. You must take that. The art of leadership that dictates that you lead at this particular time. You are one in a million of the team people, people of Benue, people of Yoruba and all other tribes. To walk around night and day and to do the official job, move around around the corners of your enemy. I faced each same challenges before in Lagos. Your ability, your maturity, your define mandate is to work hard as you pray because you are a father. Father to all. You don't have nucleus family of your own. You are a father to all of us, including myself, right? So you see your hand. To us, the people of Benue, they deserve the peace that the traditional rulers mentioned taught you. To me, let me apologize and salute all the traditional rulers present. Thank you very much for the honor of being here. But it would have been a better day to clean glasses and rejoice in progress absent the people hospitalized. Governor, please announce in a broadcast for people to donate more bloods for the hospitals and thank to those medical personnel. But for us in Nigeria, we have to find solutions to this. What's the cause of the conflict? I heard from talking with Jesus about land grabbing. What if we learn how to share and how to accommodate? We have enough land to feed, to raise our children, to cause difference, happiness and prosperity. We must do it. We will change that attitude of hate. We can. We signed through the National Anthem. We say, "No traps are talked by diva. In brotherhood we stand." It must reflected everything we do in our country and the economy in sharing in developing our people. Maybe part of the solution and as you are here is to equally find a channel, a radio station for Benue, walk with them. So that we keep talking to each other about tolerance, the capacity to build our family and to warm single family. I salute those who have governed this state before and particularly my friend, George Akomen. When they have to come, we receive a lot of youngs and food stuff from him. Not dead bodies. Let us please find a way to form a committee of elders here. That committee to comprise those who have governed this state before including Atompera. So this is the committee to really find a permanent accommodation. I'm glad the Minister for livestock is here. Where are you? Okay. Thank you. Well, I don't know, establish a ranch. Give me land, Governor. Me. Land here to establish a ranch. I will share the property after you retire. We can shake off the backwardness. Yes, we can. What's key to this? Let us look at our National Anthem again. A key item in it is that we want to hand over to the next generation, our children, years to go on, a banner without staying. We must walk towards that. And I'm ready to walk with you on that. Peace. You can't force you can give us what we needed such as food sovereignty if you continue in conflict. I said it again and again. We are members, as Nigerian, we are members of the same family, living in the same house but sleeping in different rooms. We are a team, we are Yoruba, we are Yoruba. We have no choice but to turn this country into a nation of prosperity, unity. Fight our enemies together, not fighting just right now. Governor, you get me? The yoke is on you. That's part of the problem of leadership. There's nothing, you run around, take your lamp out, flashlight, where there's no electricity. Move around to see those leaders. Join them. I ask them questions to join you and find a solution. When I faced the question of others and workers in Lagos, I solved the problem and I created economy out of it. Some groups send their parents, their children overseas to study and they were able to pay school fees and build houses from what I created. Proud of that. We can turn this tragedy into economic prosperity. We can do it and we will do it with you. That's a very serious understanding. Tolerance level. The value of life, human life is greater than the rat of a cow. And it's only when you open the door for conflict that political enemy will come in. Political enemies, they don't want you to succeed. Have you just realized that, Governor? No, no matter what I do, they will still abuse me. I read paper every time and listen to tradition whenever I have time. Just I watch who are abusing me and what type of abuse. I learned lesson from some of the critical ones too. Because I can't see it all and it's from the mouth of my critics that I will, oh, okay, that is what you do. I'm the President, I won't do it. I will blame you. So you are a failure. You just spoke, me, I'm a performer. That is the way it is, Governor. The people of Benue, I just want to appeal to you. It's a very critical time. The Governor needs your help. Help encourage him, embrace the peace. Let's set up that committee and let's get a committee of non-indigenous incorporated and Governor of Nazarawa is here too and Governor of Benue is here. Let's take that synergy for peace, development and prosperity. We are here to govern, not to bury. We are here to raise families, not to lose them. Provide health care, water to drink, food to eat. I saw plateaued lunching. It's public transportation again revival, okay. That is good. At least we are not borrowing money to pay salary now. We are able to create a good thing to happen. Governor, thank you. Let's do it. We've been fasting, our bed to give development to our country. You as leaders. It's only when you make the people of your state the priority, that is where you can plan good for them and you can execute good program. I'm glad you are here today to social solidarity. From Fara to Yoruba land. Oh, that's what you are. Thank you. Governor, you have to talk to them, get together with them. I don't know what two people are doing next. You cannot sit there, jojo together and change ideas and change, you know, challenge and combat problem to prosperity. That's where we are elected. And that is how you have your second term. You get me? Please get together with those governors too. And move round, your flashlight in your hand. The Committee of Leaders, let them establish that. Move on to the other side of the economy. We cannot do without one another. Whatever we need to do, I want us to create this leadership committee now and then meet, we'll meet in Nabugan to really fashion out the nucleus of a lasting peace. And I'm ready to invest in that peace. And among the traditional rulers, Thotif and Okidoma and others to be included in this peace committee. I think by now you'll be bored of hearing my voice. I give you the assurance that we will fight peace. We will combat this tragedy to prosperity again and again. Police, I hope you may are on alert to listen to information. How come no arrest has been made? I expect there should be arrests of those criminals. Christopher, thank you very much. I want your comments and I know you are you can't be tired of staying in the bush and although you there are Basha. Thank all of you. But we need to keep our heirs to the ground. Let's get those criminals. Let's get them out. So Nigi NIA, Nigi SSSA. Read through your information channels and let's have tangible intelligence that this will not occur again. Thank you very much. Thank you.